All right, thank you very much. Uh, the board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Ngrasia.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Stevens. Alderman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Altenberg.
Present.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Grass. President Volmer.
Present.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Calder. Alderman Stevens. Alderman Howard. Alderman Peel. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Grass. Seventeen present.
Alderman Bosley is present. I'm sorry.
Did you get me? My mic was off.
Uh, yes. Nineteen present, you have four.
Sharita, thank you very much. Uh, today we will be led in prayer by Reverend John Watson from Maple Temple, and I uh, ask that we all keep the alderman from the first uh, in our prayers as we proceed with this. Reverend Watson, please take us away.
God bless you. God bless each of you. We'll start, the June 10th is the oldest African-American celebration of the emancipation from slavery. President Lincoln, emancipation declaring all slaves were free from slavery was issued January the first eighteen sixty-three. The news traveled solely in Texas was the most remote state. And the army arrived in Gabuson, Texas after the Civil War on June nineteenth eighteen sixty-three announcing that all slaves were free, according to the Emancipation of Proclamation. This date was recognized and celebrated as the date that finally freedom was experienced by all slaves. With that in mind, we pray, gracious God, heavenly Father, we stand here as a diverse community and give praise and thanks. You heard the cries of the oppressed. Bless your name for giving us victory and freedom over slavery. We in gratitude unite all our hearts to reflect on where you have brought us from. As we enter this June 10th holiday celebration as a diverse community, let us remember all our ancestors who longed to see this day come. Let us sing songs of joy and celebration. Gracious God, thank you for the freedom we experience. Now let us not take for granted at what cost we experience it. May we fill the land with songs of joy and thanksgiving and celebration in remembering your saving grace. And at the time of celebration, give us strength and motivation and fortitude with courage to continue to pursue social justice, equality, unity for all, to move our great city further down the road of liberty for all. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community, our great city. Amen. Be safe.
Amen. Thank you very much Reverend. Appreciate all your words. Line item three, announcement, any special order today? Is there any resolutions being presented? None? All right. Like to take this moment uh, as we enter week two of this uh, journey we're on. Uh, I'd like to thank all those well-wishers who've uh, come forth and gave me uh, you know, hoping this goes well. And for those with all your fears and doubts, I appreciate your silence and will continue from here. Thank you very much. We will now go to introduction of honored guests. See some hands up. Introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the I see no hands. Alderman from the twenty-third, please proceed.
Yes, I'd like to have, I have two special guests today. Uh, Greg Meyer and I also have sitting next to me Calvin Whitaker, uh, who's uh, we're actually doing this from church. Uh, so those are my two special guests today.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us folks. All right, Alderman from twenty, Alderman from twenty-six, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member of the board, I would like to have as my special guest our very own Tracy Phillips Snuck in a birthday in on us this weekend on Saturday. So shout out to Tracy. Thank you for all you do for us down here, especially me. You never made me feel like I'm getting on your nerves. So happy birthday. I hope you enjoyed your birthday and I think you should, I wish you a happy birthday.
All right, and happy birthday. No singing. All right, uh, anyone else? I see no other hands. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today is uh, Tuesday, June fourteenth. It is also National Flag Day. Um, so if you happen to hear that the alderman from the twenty-fifth or twenty-third ward is uh, climbing a flagpole, please have him suspended.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. It's also National Bourbon Day, so please partake later wisely. Thank you. All right, approval of minutes, Friday, June tenth.
Approval of minutes dated Friday, June tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the uh, meeting minutes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by the Alderman from the fourth. That we approve the meetings, minutes of uh, June tenth meeting, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reporter standing officials.
Reporter officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
All right, line item seven petitions communications. We'll dispense with line item seven. Board bills for perfection. Is there anyone who would like to take anything off bill resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take anything off any of our informal calendars? All right, with that, we'll move to line item eleven, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill fifty-two sponsored by Alderman Cone, Alderman Spencer, and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance pertaining to the special use district establishing the Dutch Town Special Use District providing definitions and findings pertaining to said Dutch S U D further providing use and conditional use regulations for Dutch S U D and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill fifty-three sponsored by Alderman Calder and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated June third twenty twenty-two for the Locust Street, North Sixth Street, Pine Street, and North Seventh Street area. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Thank you, Sharita. Uh, reference to committee.
To the HUD Committee Board Bill fifty-two and fifty-three. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Thank you very much. We'll go to second reading, reporter standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of public employee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill thirty-nine as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Collector Revenue's Office pursuant to section eight two point six one zero revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one 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 two allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Or Bill forty as amended sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance of, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven zero seven one four amending section one repealing section two that ordinance and enacting in lieu thereof a new section two pertaining to the same subject matters and amended section three amend the, amending the pay metrics contained in the clause. The sections, the provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Or Bill forty-one as amended sponsored by Alderman Howard. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Medical Examiner's Office, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment benefits leave the absence and authorization for a deferred compensation plan repealing ordinance number seven one 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 three allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Or Bill forty-two as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance relating to them, to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Recorder's Office pursuant to section eight two point six one zero of the revised statutes of the states of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one one seven four allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Or Bill forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms, conditions of employment benefits leave of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan repealing ordinance number seven one zero nine nine allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate and including an emergency clause. The provision of the, the provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Bill forty-nine as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners pursuant to one one five point zero four five and one one five point zero four nine revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one four seven nine allocating certain other employees to a grade with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of, of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Or Bill fifty as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number six eight seven zero six relating to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees under the license collector of the City of St. Louis and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Bill fifty-one sponsored by Alderman Bosley. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Circuit Attorney Office, including a compensation plan, terms and condition of employment benefits of leave of absence and authorization for deferred compensation plan repealing ordinance number seven zero four five zero allocating certain other employees of a grade with rate, including an emergency clause. The provision of the sections contained in this bill shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Thank you. We'll dispense with the line item fourteen. Uh, Alderman from the third, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And I appreciate the members of the board today. Um, I'm asking uh, if possible, I'd ask to suspend the rules um, to move board bills thirty-nine as amended, forty as amended, forty-one as amended, forty-two as amended, forty-eight, forty-nine as amended, fifty as amended, and fifty-one to the perfection consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion. I'll entertain a second. Would anyone like to second this? Okay. We have the all.
Second from the twentieth.
All right, fourth and the nineteenth, we're out there first.
Point of order.
And the twentieth.
Point of order.
Yes.
I just making sure everyone has their cameras on when they vote. Thank you. Or when they second.
Okay, I recognize, I could see Alderman from the fourth and nineteenth as they voted.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you so much.
Organizing them on their, on their, on their seconds.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, after that, uh, okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman Ngrasia.
Yes.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Vaquero.
Abstain. I abstain.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Yes. I'm sorry, aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Volmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Ngrasia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Gunther.
Alderman Gunther, you broke up.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Howard. Alderman Spencer.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Alderman Gunther, we, we have your vote.
Alderman Cone.
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Cone is an aye.
Thank you.
Twenty aye votes and one abstain.
All right, by your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman the third. Okay, Madam Clerk, please place board bills forty as amended, forty-one as amended, forty-two as amended, forty-eight, forty-nine as amended, fifty as amended, fifty-one at the end of perfection consent calendar. And I believe uh, we need to place Board Bill thirty-nine as amended at the regular uh, consent calendar.
So noted.
All right.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Uh, yes, yes, please proceed.
Were those bills moved to just perfection consent or perfection for discussion?
Uh, all were moved to perfection consent except for thirty-nine as amended. Alderman twenty-third needs to abstain to uh, because of conflict on that particular one. He requested that we put it on for discussion and vote.
Okay, I, I apologize. I was, I was hoping that we were going to discuss some of these pay bills today. We've um, and I uh, I'm apologize, I don't know which numbers specifically here. So I'll, I'll take a look at that real quick and I'll come back with a, a motion to move a couple to perfection so we can discuss.
Okay, at this point, yes, the only one going to regular perfection is thirty-nine as amended.
Okay, thank you.
All right. One second, we have hands up. Well, we'll go in order. Uh, Alderman from twenty-six, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. As sponsor of uh, Board Bill forty as amended, I would like to uh, make the motion to move it to perfection and formal calendar, please, because I have a floor sub that's coming.
So that's going to informal calendars, what you're requesting?
Perfection and formal, so that it works.
Okay. Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right, uh, the next hand up, uh, we have Alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I, I don't know if now's the appropriate time, but I um, echo um, the Alderman from the eighth's concern. It was my understanding we would be discussing the pay bills today that they would not be on consent.
Okay, uh, it is, if there's specific numbers that, that we want to place on there, I believe Alderman from the eighth is looking at that. Uh, so uh, we can come back to that. If you'd like to discuss that with her, we can uh, do that. I just need the specific numbers. I have the one currently thirty-nine as amended. Uh, just to make sure if there's ones we don't need to go through.
I'd like to make a motion to um, move Board Bill forty-eight to the regular perfection.
Point of order, point of order, real quick to the Alderman from the sixth, Mr. President, if that's okay.
Point of order, please proceed.
No motions needed. There's, it's a simple request to move something off of the.
I, I, I understand. I apologize, Sharita.
No, I'm correcting.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, Alderman, if you, if you can make the request and we can move it.
Okay, then I request that Board Bill forty-eight be placed on the regular perfection calendar.
Okay, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right, Alderman.
Mr. President.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Yeah, uh, Mr. President, um, I believe I had about five or six of these that I had to send over to the, I, I filled out the paperwork and sent them in. I just need to make sure that uh, those are heard. My problem is I'm, I am at a funeral and I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna have to stop when mass starts. But um, um, I do have conflicts. So anything to do with by state and uh, Craig Dale's office, you know, Collector Revenue, I have conflicts, so uh, I just want to note it here, since I won't be here to abstain, I also won't be there to vote, but
Okay.
Try to get back on after.
All right, well, we, okay, because we, we have to, we have to move these bills now also before we get to the perfection consent calendar. So uh, we, you're, the one bill pertaining to the practice of this thirty-nine as amended, I believe uh, in going through that, that was a bill that, you know, you will, we have moved for you.
Yep, and, and that could very well be the only one, but I say it could be a separate one, but I thought it was, I, I, I thought it was.
Okay, well, if you have a chance, we'll try and research. But we do have to do this before we proceed with perfection consent calendar. Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Mr. President, I just wanted to share with you, if the Alderman from the twenty-third ward is not voting and he has submitted uh, a conflict of interest form, uh, we can move on. He's okay. He's not voting and he's filled out his forms, so we're fine for him.
All right, thank you very much for your clarity. Alderman from the third, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd also like to uh, with, for conflict of interest move Board Bill forty-two to the regular consent. My apologies. I know I made a motion to um, send it to uh, the perfection consent calendar, but.
So you're, you're talking about forty, forty-two as amended?
Yes, sir.
Do we have? Sharita, please make note of that. We'll be sending forty-two as amended to the regular perfection.
So noted.
So that's thirty-nine as amended, forty-two as amended, forty-eight. Any request to move any other bills to regular perfection, we must do so now before we get to line item fifteen.
And, and I do have one more thing.
Uh, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, sir. Um, the office of the uh, give me one second. Let me get this board. But you know, we got a few of them, so I want to make sure I got the right board bill here. It is uh, well, Board Bill number fifty from the License Collector's Office.
Fifty, fifty, fifty as amended?
Said again, sir.
You have Board Bill fifty as amended? Do you like to?
Right, Board Bill fifty as amended. Um, so I just wanted to know if this is the proper time they sent in a floor substitute this morning. Um, their bill was one of the bills that did not mirror the language from the rest of them. Uh, when it comes down to the, the pay information, that pay increase and, and the bonus. Um, they sent in that, that substitute this morning. Uh, I just wanted to, before we maybe got away from it, I didn't know if this is the proper time to.
Well, yeah, yeah, but, but before we put it on perfection consent. Uh, so if you'd like to take that off of uh, perfection consent.
Yes, sir. I, I would.
And we want to send it to regular perfection calendar?
Yes, sir. Is that, is that, would that be appropriate time to do it?
That is, I'm checking my rules as we're going over this. Pardon my uh,
No, no, this is real quick. I got it at nine.
We'll be sending fifty as amended. The request is to put and place fifty as amended on the regular perfection calendar. Sharita, please make note of that.
Thank you.
So noted.
All right, so before we proceed, is there any other board bills? Thirty-nine as amended, forty-two as amended, forty-eight, fifty as amended are being taken off the perfection consent. Hearing no other requests. We will now proceed to line item fifteen. Sharita, please proceed. Once you get the, the new list straight.
Perfection consent calendar. Board Bill sixteen sponsored by Alderman Evans. An ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated December sixteenth twenty twenty-one for the forty-one hundred through forty-one thirty-four Dr. Martin Luther King Drive area. Board Bill twenty-three sponsored by Alderman Howard. An ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two for the forty-seven forty-seven Atkins Avenue and four zero zero nine Delore Street area. Board Bill twenty-two sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment Apportement pertaining to the process through which the City of St. Louis Airport Authority lets concession contracts at St. Louis Lambert International Airport amended section eight of ordinance number five four nine 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 approved March March nineteenth nineteen sixty-eight as codified in section one eight point zero eight point zero eight zero of the revised code City of St. Louis twenty twenty and O contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Or Bill twenty-seven sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance uh, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment Apportement amended ordinance number seven one two eight eight and the air service initiative program for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three as adopted by ordinance number seven one two eight eight adopting an amended air service initiative program for fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four and providing for amended financial incentives for new airlines and new air service at St. Louis Lambert International Airport contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill twenty-eight sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Comptroller and the Board of Estment and Apportment making findings respecting the transfer of a maximum of thirteen million seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars dollars of excess money set the City of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the debt service stabilization fund to the airport revenue fund during fiscal year twenty twenty-two to mitigate rates on annual basis on the terms of the airport use and lease agreement commenced in July first twenty two thousand and sixteen, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Or Bill thirty sponsored by Alderman Cone. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estment Apportement providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the City of St. Louis intends to transfer from the airport development fund through the airport contingency fund into the airport revenue fund in order to fund the airport's air service initiative program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one through fiscal year twenty twenty-four, which total estimated cost may not exceed three point four million dollars provided for supplement supplemental transfers contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Or Bill thirty-four sponsored by Alderman Calder. An ordinance approving, I'm sorry, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven one three nine zero which ordinance amended ordinance number six eight nine six four related to a lease agreement dated September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven between the City of St. Louis and Frey Weber, Inc., authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha containing the severability clause. Board Bill thirty-five sponsored by Alderman Calder. An ordinance amending ordinance number seven one three nine one which ordinance amended ordinance number six seven nine eight relating to a lease agreement dated January the first twenty two thousand and seven between the City of St. Louis Frey Weber, Inc., authorizing an execution of a First Amendment to lease agreement between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC contain the severability clause. between the city and New Frontier Materials Operation Alpha LLC containing severability clause. Board Bill twenty-four sponsored by Alderman Calder pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the directive streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on the twenty-two hundred block of Indiana Avenue, the twenty-two hundred block of Missouri Avenue Mississippi Avenue between Guyer Avenue and Interstate forty-four overpass, the twenty-two hundred block of Jewels twenty-one hundred block of Guyer, two thousand block of Guyer, the two thousand block of Anne Avenue twenty-one hundred block of Allen Avenue and a two thousand block of Allen Avenue. Board Bill twenty-five sponsored by Alderman Calder and all of Alderman Gunther and ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Diane Kirby Way pursuant to ordinance number six eight nine three seven, which shall begin at the North Caribbean Lamai Street at the intersection of Lamai and North South Alleyway bound about thirteenth street to the east and interstate hi- highway fifty-five to the west and shall run north on said alleyway to the Caribbean of Shannon Door Avenue at the intersection of Shannon Door Avenue and said alleyway. Board Bill thirty-two sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the directive streets to ins- install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on a fifty-eight hundred block of Clements Avenue between the intersection of Clements Avenue and Goodfellow Boulevard and Clements Avenue and Hamilton Avenue and on the fifty-five hundred block of Kate's Avenue between the intersection of Kate's Avenue and Bell Avenue and Kate's Avenue and Clara Avenue. Board Bill thirty-three sponsored by Alderman Switzer pursuant to ordinance number seven zero three 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 as amended by ordinance number seven one three nine four and ordinance directing the directive streets to install speed humps to calm the floor traffic on a four thousand block of Eifler Burger Street. Board Bill thirty-six sponsored by Alderman Page and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Apportement, amended ordinance number seven zero zero seven four authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a second amended and restated financing agreement in connection with the financing and refinancing of certain costs associated with the NGA West facility modernization project and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill forty-three sponsored by Alderman Rice and Alderman Green and ordinance pertaining to a special use district established in South Grand Special Use District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said district, further providing use and conditional use regulations for said district and contain an emergency law, emergency clause. Board Bill forty-one as amended sponsored by Alderman Howard and ordinance to regulate employer and employ employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the medical examiner's office, including a compensation plan, times and conditions of employment benefits leave absence and authorization for deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven one 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 three allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Bill forty-nine as amended and ordinance relating to the in, to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees on the St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners pursuant to one one five point zero four five and one one five point zero four nine revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one four seven nine, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Board Bill fifty-one sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Circuit Attorney Office including the compensation plan, terms and condition of employment benefits leave absence and authorization for deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven zero four five zero allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provision of the section contained in this bill should be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Thank you very much, Sharita. Take a breath. All right, Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, are you with us? All right.
Sorry, Mr. President, I had to switch over. My battery was dying.
All right. Hate when that happens. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Entertained a second?
Second.
I didn't catch the number, did you?
Four.
That was the Alderman from the fourth.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, it has been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second by the Alderman from the fourth that we approve our perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? By your vote, we have sustained the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-fifth and approved the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one as amended sponsored by President Reed, Alderman Davis and Alderman Ballmer and ordinance making appropriation for payment of interest expenses and principal of the city's bonded indebtedness in establishing city rate tax. I'm sorry, city tax rates and making appropriation for current year expenses of the city government containing an emergency clause.
All right. Oliver from the nineteenth, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill one as amended.
Oh, I I request uh, approval for Board Bill number one as amended.
Okay, entertain a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by the Alderman from the fourth. Would you like to make any remarks, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. President and members of the board, our annual budget under Board Bill one as amended had a very thorough reviewing process with uh the departments that came before us explaining uh, the reasons why they were allocating funds as such in their budgets. We only had one uh, reference to make a change to add for one position uh, that was agreed upon by the executive branch and everyone uh made sure that that was done with haste. Uh, we had a great public input. Uh, actually, we've got some great ideas about some future programming and also um got some uh, understanding of how the system works. Uh, so with that, uh, I think that the process went well and uh, many of the older persons had an opportunity to view at some point. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? I don't see any hands. It has been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill one as amended. All in favor, signify by say, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
As amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the collector revenues office pursuant to section eight two point six one zero revised statutes of Missouri by repealing ordinance number seven one 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 two, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate including an emergency clause. The provision of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, Oliver from the third, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill thirty-nine as amended.
All right, thank you. Uh, Board Bill thirty-nine as amended is a simple pay bill. Which is like many of the pay bills that are before us today, we are making sure that the individuals who work in these um, county offices and the office offices within the city can get a three percent raise, have some sort.
Oliver from the third, would you like to make a motion, please?
Oh, yes, sir. My apologies. Uh, I move that we pass Board Bill thirty-nine out with a due pass recommendation.
Okay, well, 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 first move to adopt, please.
Move to adopt, I'm sorry. I move that we adopt Board Bill thirty-nine as amended.
Okay, I entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderman from the third and seconded by the Alderman from the fourth. Now, please proceed, Alderman from the third.
All right, thank you. Once again, uh, Board Bill thirty-nine is a simple pay bill. Uh, one of the, I'm, one second here, I am, can you still, can you all still see my face?
We cannot, sir.
Okay, so it looks like when I, when I pull up any information on my phone, it it cuts off the the screen and that's not by me not wanting to to have my screen on, but my my screen goes to my email. So I was looking at the board bill in particular.
That's fine, sir. As long as you're not voting, we, you know, you can disappear for a second.
Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, this board bill is a simple pay bill for the um, collector revenues office. Uh, most of these bills here today are just to give our employees some sort of a standard three percent raise. As you know, they have been for years trying to figure out what a a a pay scale looks like for these employees and having something significant um, uh, that they would consider something that we consider also growth for being here for five or ten years, people having for some time haven't had raises within the city of St. Louis. So, you know, this gives them a starting what it is that they are uh, three percent per year. Of course, some things are performance based based on how the departments are set up, but um, you know, this this gives a really, really good start to the employees knowing that five or ten years from now they have a thirty percent increase in pay, um, you know, contingent upon how long you'll be here in the city or how long you plan on being here in the city, you can actually look at what your potential uh, earnings are. So, you know, that's that's really great. And you also get a two thousand dollar bonus. Folks have been working very hard throughout the pandemic. Uh, we've been looking for employees, so folks certainly deserve it. So, you know, with that that's what Board Bill thirty-nine most uh, mostly encompasses as far as the differences. This is a pay bill um, that gives the correct, the collective revenue, the the operations, uh, operational revenue that he has and being able to once again pay his employees the different um, um, positions that uh, they have available to them once that they create what those side and sliding ski, uh, sliding pay scales look like also. Um, so, you know, once again, we're trying to just make sure our employees get what it is that they deserve and trying to put ourselves in a position where the city can be a good competitor when it comes down to uh, jobs and the different departments that um, are hiring to work for the City of St. Louis for services. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, I don't see any more hands at this point. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. We perfect Board Bill uh, number thirty-nine is amended. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Bill forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees.
Is it, Sharita, is this Board Bill forty forty as amended or?
Forty-eight. I was going in order they gave me forty-eight.
Okay, forty, I thought was forty-eight supposed to go to perfection formal or was my notes or my notes wrong?
Think that was forty as amended, Alderman.
Okay, okay, I made my notes better. Thank you very much for correcting me. Appreciate it. All right.
Board Bill forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to regulate the employer and employee working relationship between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including the compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment benefits leave absence authorization for deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number seven one zero nine nine, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right. Oliver from the third, you're recognized on Board Bill forty-eight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pres- all right, thank you, Mr. President. Once again, this is another pay bill.
Okay, please make a motion.
Uh, sir, um, I would like to adopt Board Bill forty-eight.
So there's been a motion on the floor to adopt Board Bill forty-eight. Entertained a second?
As amended.
Uh, forty-eight is, uh, there's, I am Mike. This is straight Bill forty-eight, I believe. Yeah, there's no amendments to forty, to Board Bill forty-eight. Again, we uh, have a motion to adopt Board Bill forty-eight. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we do this. Uh, we will now take discussion. Oliver from the third, please proceed.
Yes, sir. Once again, Board Bill forty-eight is a uh, simple uh, pay bill. This one is for this is for the entire City of St. Louis. This is the blanket bill uh, that the mayor's office has been working very diligently to present to us and try to get out to all the employees so we can make sure that once again employees in the City of St. Louis can receive a two thousand dollar raise here in that uh, within that first month of this new uh, fiscal period and uh, we can start that three percent raise this year also. So I know there has been a lot of different changes that have been made over the last few days. That's also because there was some information that was passed along through our lawyers, um, after speaking with uh, the the mayor's office that, you know, made sure that this would be done in time enough for that first check for people to start seeing that three percent increase um, and making sure that those folks could receive that bonus within this fiscal year and not have to wait for an entire year. So once again, that's another reason why uh, this board meeting on a Tuesday, not a Friday, and uh, we're just trying to make sure and ensure that uh, this gets out in a timely fashion and legally, these residents are able to receive these funds and that three percent raise within the time period um, that was uh negotiated and designed for them to receive it.
Please proceed. I thought you were finished.
I I I, you know, I talk a lot, so I can be done. I know each one of them are significant and maybe different. I know there were a few other people who had questions about this one in particular, so it's just good sometimes to give a little bit of background on what's going on. It seems that these are being pushed through for some folks and some folks that weren't privy to the information on the back end. The reason why that would seem like it is going fast, like we put some of these on perfection consent and things like that 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 is a reason because there is a timeframe that uh, the mayor's office once again has talked to you know, our lawyers here in the city and they just want to make sure that come the nineteenth, this is signable by the mayor. This will be a fiscal year that the uh, employees here in the City of St. Louis will be able to reap the benefits from what it is we're trying to do now and not like next year, so.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. We have uh, Oliver from the fifteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I agree with the Alderman from the third that it's paramount that this gets passed quickly and city employees get their raises. Um, I do have a couple of questions though, um, if the Alderman from the third would yield for questions.
Certainly. Alderman from the third, will you yield the questions for the Alderman from the fifteen?
I will, absolutely.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, so I got an email from uh, Jeff Hans at the carpenters union our meeting today um, that is discussing the shift differential and weekend differential for employees. Um, it's not a part of this pay plan. And with the shift differential and the weekend differential from where um, it previously was to where this board bill has it.
Um, you you broke up just for a split second. I didn't hear the the full question. I'm not sure.
Sorry. Uh, would you be able to break down for us the differences in the well, and the weekend differential between um, what was previously in place versus what's in place in uh, in this bill?
As far as the the weekend differential in 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 reference to pay?
Yes, um, because the the contention, uh, the concern that was brought to me was that um, that it has been uh, eliminated from this and that the city would be you know, it would be really difficult to maintain staff for second and third at corrections and airport and the the water department um, without having that incentive still included. Um, so I'm I'm just curious what changes have taken place with regard to that incentive.
I understood. So with that particular question, of course, you know, this is a very, very long board bill. If I could answer that specific question, you have to give me a second so I can actually look through it. Um, particularly to get to that particular part, I did not get a uh, email from Mr. Hans that outlined specifically through bullet points exactly what it is they'd like to address. I do know that this bill has been up for conversation for some time. Mr. Moulton, uh, the mayor's office uh, various entities here within the Board of Alderman, which is why I'm not carrying all of these bills um, have been trying to figure out specifically how it is that we can get this information out. I know for sure, for sure, Mr. Hans is, you know, a great guy. He's definitely doing what he can to fight for the employees. One of the issues that we've had with this is that it came so fast, you know, just being, you know, I keep it all to a thousand. I try to be as realistic as we can. We haven't had months and months and months to prepare like we usually would. We haven't had a director that's been here for a year that's had this compensation study. Um, the director left, dropped the compensation study in people laps. We had a a big influx in ARPA dollars, so folks are are really hairy enough to try to get people what they have deserved for some time and trying to put some type of structure around it. Um, and just just being honest, we're not gonna get it all right. And Mr. Um, and just, just being honest, we're not gonna get it all right. And Mr. Hans is, you know, he's right. He's supposed to fight for those individuals who are saying there may be some changes here or there. Am I privy to every change that he'd asked for? Uh, no ma'am, if I was without a doubt, at bare minimum, we would have talked about him in committee and he did express in committee that were some concerns that he had. Um, you know, without a doubt, but as far as us being able to have the time that it takes to work those changes out to ensure that this money could be passed out and that three percent raise could be gotten within the timeframe needed and necessary. Um, uh, based on this fiscal year and what, you know, the lawyer said here that we need to kind of knock this out. We just went ahead and, and, and rolled the ball on, on what the different departments have worked for thus far, which is why once again, I just tried to do a committee sub for another office. Everybody's hairy enough to try to take care of their employees right now. And it's not our fault or the, the whole city's fault. A lot of transitions took place over the last few months. Um, especially, once again, we don't have the director that's been here for years and years. And Mr. Moulton and other folks are doing the best that they can, working with Nancy Cross. And once again, our office is also, if I was the public employees uh, chairman for the last four years, maybe these conversations will be having. Not saying that I do a good job of this or that, but I'm just saying that, you know, we all are, are kind of hairy enough to try to get this work done. So I do understand where Mr. Hans is coming from. I don't specifically know the answer to that particular question, but I will say there's nothing on this earth that will stop us from being able to negotiate better terms for the city employees. And there is no um, uh, intent at all in, in not working with Mr. Hans or working to ensure that whatever our employees previously had that they may not be privy to right now, which I'm not privy to myself, we can put those particular things back hopefully. Because this is fiscal and we're talking about, you know, dollars. This is something that will not particularly affect them to where it's something that we can't put into uh, the budget work and be like an immediate change, uh, because we're not saying it's a pay change or something like that where it would have to be on every check. This was, you know, it seems like this would be something that's in protocol or, you know, um, working with these different department heads to make sure that they changed a particular policy that gives them um, uh, the uh, I, I guess that scale in which their employees can apply for holiday pay and things like that. I'm always one hundred percent a minimal to going back to the table. So just, just, I just.
So, so it would, I, from what I hear you, you saying, I, um, it is probably an oversight and wasn't in this wasn't intended.
Without a doubt.
The bill. Okay. So if we were able to put together an amendment real fast to get that back in, would you be amenable to that?
Done.
Okay.
Just like, we, we can figure it out and the clerk is with it and, and everybody's like, let's, let's do it. Any this, nothing is meant to push this through. It is meant so we can get it done in a timely fashion to ensure that it is legalized. Um, so these, these, these uh, amazing employees of ours can be able to reap the benefits of what it is that we're putting the work in to do right now. So, you know, we're, we're, we're open to everything as long as we can get it done.
Okay, that, uh, that would, that would be my concern. I mean, I know that we can continue to negotiate uh, on this, but once it passes, I know the lose that incentive to negotiate in some, uh, you know, we say that we're gonna do things, we're, you know, we pass something and we say we're gonna come back and do something else and
Never do.
No, unfortunately happen. So.
That's right.
All right. So I will uh, yield back for now and uh, and see if we can get together an amendment uh, to rectify this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. President, I, I don't wanna, wanna sound like this, but I, I have like three iPhone chargers. And I utilize my phone for my meetings and my today is just a weird day. It looks like two of my cords don't work. And I'm finna go buy another one right now, but in the event that my phone does die, this is very unprofessional, but I have to make sure that I keep it real. This is extremely important for our employees. Um, I would like Alderwoman Davis or uh, we are Alderwoman Davis, please, cause you continue. My phone will pop back on in about ten or fifteen minutes. I'm gonna go buy a supercharger right now if it does die on me, but I'm not getting a, a good charge from rechargeers I have on.
I believe the proper procedure is Alderwoman Davis, will you be uh, amenable to uh, carry on the discussion for Board Bill Forty Eight?
At the request of. About fifteen minutes, that's it.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, you had your hand up. I thought that you wanted to ask yourself a question.
I just wanted to make a comment on what was being suggested.
Okay, please proceed.
Union negotiations have been uh, documented properly within uh, the charter of the city of St. Louis. It must be done in that manner. It will continue to be negotiated as was stated in the meeting. Uh, Mr. Moulton guaranteed that yes, there's another meeting scheduled. Uh, Jeff Hans shared with us another meeting schedule. And according to everything that I know uh, about union negotiations, everything stays the same until there's a change. So nobody is not going to receive their uh, differential pay. And they're still negotiating. They have a meeting scheduled for later in June.
Okay.
I don't think we should try to supersede the process and get it confused. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Alderman Todd, May eighteenth, you have your hand up, sir.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my question is, will there be a roll call uh, on this vote? Uh, can I?
Uh, if, if you request one, there will be, sir.
And, and may I speak on this issue? Uh, I think there are some uh, employees who deserve a, a three percent raise and a two thousand dollar bonus, cause we do have some great employees. But I'm looking out my window and my trash hasn't been picked up. And I've been getting calls uh, throughout the eighteen ward about lack of trash being picked up. I've been getting calls about this tall grass that uh, uh, that uh, it's some of it's six feet chop tall growing in the trees. Also the same thing with the the parks. We have uh, our parks don't have any, we have uh, we don't have supervision in activities that supplies in our parks. Also, uh, uh, the buildings are still open. We had a fireman killed in the building, but we need to put four of those buildings up on all floors for just two years and then put windows in. And all of those type of things are happening especially, especially in North St. Louis, which wouldn't be tolerated in certain other parts of the city of St. Louis. I cannot see how uh, any, I don't see how all them, uh, all of them in uh, deserve, uh, deserve two thousand dollars. Are you even a raise at all? Uh, those that cannot cut grass, cannot build up buildings, cannot uh, 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 do the streets. Uh, and um, so yes, some do and some don't. So my question is, when the vote come up, do I, uh, okay, so I'm calling for a roll call, cause uh, my residents are totally, totally dissatisfied that the one that I, most of them that I represent with the poor services. Especially in North of them, uh, that we, that they're getting, and even in the central west end. I have calls from all of my constituents about the poor responses for certain, from certain departments, the poor services. And I think a raise should be directly tied to the services that these workers provide to our constituents and the constituents should be proud of it. And uh, we should, and, and we should be able to pay, but uh, first of all, take care of those uh, uh, things that need to be done that benefit the taxpayer. And then we should deal with the uh, taking care of the employee. And I say, employees deserve to be paid. I'm a union person, but um, but we cannot, if we cannot afford to fix through those services that I, that are, are, are being requested by our, cause our constituent, then uh, we shouldn't be able to uh, some of us shouldn't get a raise. In fact, some of us should be removed the way uh, the eighteen, part of the eighteen one look. So uh, so I go on record right now, posing a raise until uh, my services are given to my residents.
Sorry about that. Had to take care of some, uh, we have noted your request for a roll call vote, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we, next to hand up is Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I'm trying to kind of work out. I, I tried to tune into some of the, the meetings yesterday. Um, here and um, I'm not sure if uh, the Alderman from the third is still with us, but I'm if he is.
He's not right now. The Alderwoman from the nineteenth is handling the bill.
Okay, great. Um, would the Alderwoman from the nineteenth yield for questions?
Uh, let me, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, will you yield the questions from the Alderwoman from the eighth?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Wonderful. Thank you, Alderwoman. Um, so there, there are a couple of things that are still um, sort of swirling out here. One of these is um, the, what the Alderwoman from the fifteenth noted on the, the shift differential questions about whether or not those would change in the interim. And so your understanding is that the current agreement that is in place will govern until negotiations are finished. And is that only for union employees or is that for all of the city workers that fall under the categories that are, are normally um, receiving that shift differential pay?
Each, each division that has a union representing them, those negotiations will continue. We don't have, um, I don't know of any other department that came before us or any other pay bill that had that concern. So this is the only one that we're dealing with, with Mr. Hans. And when you have uh, any kind of agreement, and I've dealt with unions and contracts and agreements, they have the opportunity for everything to remain the same until the agreement is either satisfied and or they go into a, a different type of arbitration because they can't get to a satisfaction. So no one is gonna be without differential pay.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Um, the other piece I believe that Mr. Hans mentioned was a potential increase for employees that drive their own vehicles uh, while performing their duties for the city. Was there any discussion of that in, in committee yesterday that, that you're aware of or, or in connection with this bill?
No. And uh, you have the executive branch of the city of St. Louis as always handle that. I've never seen it come before us.
Okay.
Like the NISs. I don't know if they still get mileage or I know it's changed a couple of times since I've been here. How they address that. So we have nothing to do with that.
Okay. Yeah, I know they, um, the, the federal rate just increased on, on the mileage and I would hope that that would translate to our employees as well.
It always has.
Okay, okay, that's great. Um, so then the other piece, um, the other piece that a number of us have been uh, working with uh, for a while is the extended sort of paid family leave. And I believe that there is some that is included in this bill, but maybe not. Um, do you can you speak to any, any conversations around that, that particular provision of our employee contract being um, being extended? Was, have we expanded paid family leave this year?
Everything that came before us had the six weeks.
And six weeks.
Which is the federal standard.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. And we're trying to, so thinking out procedure here, um, the bills are moving, we're having to move them this quickly um, because the mayor needs to sign them before June nineteenth. Is that what is?
In order for people to receive them on the paychecks in July, we'd like for them to receive it in July.
Okay. So, and this falls within an emergency measure that the mayor can sign within that first ten day period that normally they have to wait on the um, on the bills.
Every one of them have an emergency clause, yes.
Okay, um, okay, I think that answers all of my questions. I see some of my other colleagues have questions, so I'll yield back. Thank you, Alderwoman, for answering the questions.
And, and just to note that anything we amend today by Rule Sixty-five, we would have to wait till Friday to pass. But, but as you know, we are meeting Thursday. So any amendments we make would not be you know, we have, we, we have the time due to Rule Sixty-five. We have to wait three days if we'd amended. So that would mean we would not get the bills out and the bonuses would not be met. Uh, that's one thing to consider as we're, we're going over this. Okay, uh, we will now go to uh, you've yielded back Oliver from the eighth. We will now go to Alderman from the twenty-eighth. You're recognized.
Uh, hi. Would the uh, Alderwoman from the nineteenth yield to questions?
Oliver from the nineteenth, will you have the questions from the Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Hi, good morning. I, I just have a, basically a quick question, more of a point is, and I feel like, you know, this probably is a question for everybody who's been around the city longer than I have, but I mean, currently is it everyone's understanding that our basic employees like, or I mean, our, you know, our, our city employees get shift differential uh, for evening work and for work. Uh, because the only point that I will say is that, uh, you know, I, I worked at the casino industry for a while. I dealt cards, I dealt roulette, uh, was a pit boss. And uh, we didn't have a shift in differential. And I always thought that that was just like really terrible and profoundly unfair. Uh, so I feel like I, you know, owe it to my, you know, twenty-something-year-old self to advocate for, for that uh, anytime I can. Um, so I am curious if the city has it and um, and, and that, you know, if we don't, then um, I am in favor of all efforts to um, you know, to, to maintain it and to add it.
And the, and, and the case where we have people that, like the fire department and other places, uh, there is a shift differential and the departments that we're talking about uh, under Mr. Hans' business management, they have shift of differential, have always added. We're negotiating, they're negotiating their contract. And that's where they are at that point in the contract. And if they're negotiating for it to be higher, they need to have the opportunity to get to that conclusion. So uh, they are continuing with their negotiations, but in union contracts, until you finalize negotiations, everything stays the same. So they are currently getting shift differential. This is not something new trying to be developed. So we're just moving forward.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Any further questions, sir?
Uh, nothing, no.
Okay, thank you very much. We have next uh, up was Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderman Ryan, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh, go on the record here to respectfully disagree with my colleague from the eighteenth. Uh, our city workers are just getting their butts kicked out there on trash and grass and potholes. And it's not because they're, they're lazy or they're not trying or they don't care. It's because they're woefully understaffed right now. And a, a raise will help us as a city to hire on more and to maintain uh, more workers and good workers that we need in order to make this city function. So I am firmly in support of giving uh, the city workers a raise. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. On next on our hit parade, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh, you are recognized. Alderwoman Boyd.
I'm on the hip parade, huh? I just have a comment. I, uh, and I'm the type of person, I like to uh, compliment people where we are. And so I want to compliment the administration and working close with the Public Employees Committee because they saw the urgency in moving this so we could take care of our employees. So that's, that's a good thing. And so people are questioning, and I just think that we need to look at as uh, Alderman Ryan said, our employees are getting killed out there. And now with the weather, the way it is, it's not helping the situation. So their backs are constantly against the wall. So I, you know, I applaud the administrated, administration because they had the foresight to start speeding this up so they can make sure these people are recognized that we do appreciate them and the work that they're doing. And so uh, I, I just wanted to say that because, you know, we constantly attacking people. And the way this atmosphere is going, we need to quit all this beating each other up and start doing the work at hand. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Alderwoman. Uh, we have Alderwoman from the sixth. Alderwoman Grashia, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I, I want to um, articulate that I'm, I'm really excited that we have paid family and medical leave written into Board Bill Forty-Eight. I think it's incredibly important um, for our city employees to understand that we, we value um, them in that way. Um, I am concerned because uh, there has been a coalition of individuals uh, and stakeholders, including myself, who has been working on a paid leave policy for the city for about a year and a half. We were working closely with the administration. Um, and uh, those conversations were cut off to some extent. And really, especially for the um, childbirth, adopting a child, any sort of care situations in that regard. Evidence has shown that twelve weeks of bonding um, has significant um, benefits to both a child and parent. And in fact, the American Academy of Pediatric, Pediatrics recommends that children are not enrolled in daycare until the age of, of twelve weeks. Um, and I think also uh, similar evidence exists in, in evidence exists in, in terms of employees in case of a birth or adoption or stillbirth, and that is not written into this policy. And so while I am excited that we are moving this forward at this time, I think we still have a lot of work to do. And I hope that in time for next fiscal year, we're able to have a more comprehensive, inclusive conversation with the administration to ensure those benefits are afforded to our employees. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Alderman. Any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion. It's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill, I believe, 48. It's been a while since we started. Board Bill 48, all in favor? There has been a request for a roll call vote. So Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman de Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Bacaro. 19 I votes and one no vote.
Thank you very much. By your vote, we have passed out Board Bill 48. I'm not passed up here. We perfected Board Bill 48. Sharita, next.
Board Bill.
Is it 42 as amended?
It is 42 as amended. I'm just trying to find it.
All right, take your time.
Board Bill 42 as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the recorder's office pursuant to section 82.610 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri by repealing ordinance number 71174 allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and contain an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June 19th, 2022.
Thank you, thank you. I believe at the request of the sponsor, Alderman from the nineteenth, will you be handling this?
Yes, sir.
I recognize you to handle Board Bill 42 as amended then.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt Board Bill 42 as amended.
Entertained a second?
Second.
Second by the, moved by the Alderman from the nineteenth, second by the Alderman from the fourth that we perfect Board Bill 42 as amended. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. This pay bill is identical to the list of them that we have before us today for county offices. There was very little discussion on this bill yesterday, and I will answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman, Alderman from the eighteenth, Alderman Todd, you're recognized.
This is like a roll call.
All right, sir. There's been a request for a roll call. When we get to that. Thank you, sir. It's been recognized. And any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
All right. It has been moved and seconded. We perfect Board Bill 42 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying, I, I pardon, we do have a request for a roll call. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Abstain.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman de Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye, aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Oh.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman de Gracia. Alderman Howard. Alderman Bacaro. 19 I votes, one no vote, and one voted abstain.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, we have perfected Board Bill 42 as amended. We will now proceed.
Board Bill 50 as amended sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 68706 related to the appointment and rates of compensation of certain employees under the license collector of the city of St. Louis and enacting in lieu thereof a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and contain an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective June 19th, 2022.
Thank you, Sharita. Alderman from the third, I believe you're with us. You're recognized on Board Bill 50 as amended.
Uh, thank you, sir. And I appreciate the patience with the other board bills. If Clark could have my name as a I on the, the ones that I did miss, my apologies unless we did previous roll. Um, this board bill is, is just like the other ones. The difference is with this.
But I can make, please make a motion, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Um, I'd like to move that we adopt Board Bill 51.
Is 50 as amended? Board Bill 50 as amended.
I, you got Board Bill 50 as amended.
All right, and
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third and seconded by Alderman from the fourth that we adopt Board Bill 50 as amended. Let us now proceed. Alderman from the third, any discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. So I just want to make sure it's the appropriate time to introduce. There is a floor substitute for this bill. Does everyone have that?
Uh, okay, does anyone, I want everyone checking that. Okay. Okay, Alderman from the third, you might, I, I, if you have any changes to this bill, you realize that it will not pass out in time. Just to, you were absent while we were discussing the rule of 65. Any changes made require three days, and we are meeting this Thursday. So by rule of 65, this would not be available for the signing on the 19th.
Um, well, I'm, I, three days from now would be the, the 19th. I mean, three, not three days, three days from now.
Yeah, our, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, sir, because of the holiday this weekend.
Right, got you. If, if we did the committee, so we, what you're saying is in three days, we would not be able to move it up.
No, we, we're not meeting on Friday. We're meeting on Thursday.
Meeting on Thursday, got you.
If you want to take that into consideration, I do have two hands up if you want to think about that for a second. Alderman from the 26th, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to now request that Board Bill 40 as amended be moved back to the end of the perfection calendar, please.
All right, okay. Sharita, please make note of that.
Thank you.
So noted.
All right. With that, Alderman from the 19th, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. President. The amendments that the Alderman from the third has before him, if it is pertaining to the actual 3% and/or $2,000, we went ahead and amended that bill and included that. So if you share with us what the amendments are, maybe we're okay.
Okay. Alderman from the third, if you would like to proceed with your discussion?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you. So, so what, what happened was, and just so everybody can have a clear understanding, of course, we, we talked about this a bit earlier, that some of these departments were not all the way privy to how this two, I mean, the 3% raise would go, nor the funding that was coming with it as far as the $2,000 bonus, whether, whether or not it was coming from ARPA funds or personal offices. So one piece of information that one of the offices, or a few of them got privy to, as of recent, which is one of these offices, that, that few thousand dollars or $2,000 would be coming from ARPA funds. Some of these offices work independently, so they look at their fiscal ability to be able to take care of such requests. And under the current thought that they would have to foot that bill, they decided not to put that in the bill, thinking that they did not have the appropriate, that they did not have the funds to be able to appropriate them to give those employees what it is that, that the other officers were asking for. So upon finding out that these offices were and could be getting, will be getting this funding from the ARPA funding, uh, they sent in information to make sure that their employees were eligible also and able to receive the same benefits that the rest of the city employees have received. So just a little bit of background so we can understand why these different changes are being made. This is, once again, really quick for a lot of these different departments. We all are working, trying to just, just figure out how to make sure that we get this done in a timely fashion, or within that first month, uh, in this fiscal year, those changes can start making, uh, those changes can start, uh, take, taking effect. Um, so the, uh, two amendments in particular, the amendment that is in this bill is there was no effective date, like the, if anybody saw the committee hearing yesterday, we have to change the effective date to, uh, June 19th to make sure that within this, once again, uh, this fiscal year, when the first check came out in July, that 3% raise would be there. Also, uh, the following check that folks will be able to have and receive that $2,000 bonus. So, um, those changes were not in the bill yesterday, uh, because once again, uh, that office, this office here, um, thought that they would possibly fiscally have to cover that, that, uh, their responsibility. And, and they knew that they didn't have the, the funding to be able to do so. So after, once again, finding out that they would not have to fit that, put that, uh, this morning, uh, uh, they got on the horn. We had a conversation. They sent out a, uh, amendment, and here we are now, trying to make sure that those employees also have the ability to get that 3% raise and that bonus here in this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay. Alderman from the 19th, you have your hand up, Missouri. Please.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you very much. I was handling that bill for the Alderman yesterday, and those statements were made that they were not going to provide that to their employees based on their budget. But I in turn said, I know this will change. And we went ahead and we did amend their bill. It has the appropriate dated information in there. So their bill has the same thing as all the other bills have in it. And yes, they can move forward and give the payment to their employees. So it was amended with the correct information, like we did all the other bills yesterday.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, at this point, Alderman from the 18th, Alderman Todd, you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both of all the people. Uh, I would like to, um, have a roll call because, uh, a lack, for the 18th ward, I'm only speaking for the 18th ward. Uh, for the lack, for the lack of pro orders of my residents not being taken into, taken up in these deals as well as poor city services by some of the departments. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, sir. Thank you. Your, your request, your request for a roll call has been noted, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. So with that, I see no other hands up. Alderman from the third, you're recognized to close.
All right. Thank you, sir. I renew my motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. We perfect Board Bill number 50 as amended. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderman de Gracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Oh.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman de Gracia. Alderman Howard. Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Con.
Aye.
Thank you. 20 I votes and one voted no.
Thank you, Sharita. By your vote, we have perfected Board Bill 50 as amended. Sharita, please proceed.
Board Bill 40 as amended sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and ordinance amending ordinance number 70714 by amending section one, repealing section two of that ordinance and enacting in lieu, in lieu thereof a new section to pertaining to the same subject matters and amended section three, amend the pay metrics contained in emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June 19th, 2022.
All right. Thank you, Sharita. Alderman from the 26th, you're recognized on Board Bill 40 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is, again, one of the pay bills that we have been discussing.
Please make a motion.
Oh.
Please make a motion.
Please, I would like to make the motion to, um, perfect Board Bill 40 as amended.
Entertained a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by the Alderman 26, seconded by Alderman from the third. Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for clarity, because I'm getting texts, and I'm sure other people are getting texts, the public is watching. And the way that some of this back and forth is very frustrating because the narrative will be that something we have done here today reflects on people getting paid for the work that we all have said that we appreciate that they do. That is not the case. Whatever the, the magical date is, whatever the rush is in this, um, I have no control over, we don't have any control over. What we're trying to do is our part in carrying the legislation to get this work done. Yesterday in committee, there was a sub to the committee sub that was supposed to be, uh, presented on behalf of 40 as, um, on Board Bill 40, but it didn't get in time for the 24 hour cutoff. So since it wasn't there in time for the 24 hour cutoff, we were planning to do a sub on the floor. Well, now, as we continue and know that as we continue and know that that can be done because of the mean our Thursday, we are now jumping back and forth, trying to, again, work collectively as a book to get this done. I wanted to make sure I was clear on that because people are getting the wrong narrative about the way this looks today. And I can't diddle enough what my colleague from the twenty-fourth said. We have the utmost respect for the workers here in the city of St. Louis. We do. Nobody is pointing out, anybody is saying that they don't want them to get paid and compensated for the work that they have done selfishly and tirelessly, not just through a pandemic, but there were problems in this system, and there continues to be problems before the pandemic. So I just appreciate you, President, for helping us go back and forth and telling us this, because if not, it might have not gone this, you know, it might not have gone this way, and then we would have woken up to a narrative that people aren't getting paid because of the Board of Alderman. And I don't want that, because we're all doing the best we can here. So again, Board Bill forty as amended is the pay bill for the sheriff's office, and I'm asking that it has, that we perfected today.
All right. Any further discussion? I see Oliver from the eighteenth, you have your hand up or requesting a roll call, sir?
Yes, sir. And also, I would like to make the statement. I've worked all my life. No one has worked more years than I've worked. I started when I was old enough to use my hand and feet. So, but at the same time, I still, my pro orders, the pro orders of my constituents are not being addressed. And I think that in order, and I'm, and also issues that and services are not being provided, that I mentioned earlier, when we have grass six feet tall, when we have when we also have quiet without supervision, we have buildings that have kids, has killed a fireman in the past, we've had dead bodies pulled out of buildings in the eighteenth ward. So my, and we, when does, all winter, even during the spring, fall, and summer, those buildings continue to have inclement weather. And now we're going to end up eventually having to tear them down. And our population is going to decrease. The tax base is going to decrease. So I don't, so I'm doing it because the priority has to be providing services for my constituents and pro orders for my constituents. And that's what I ran on, and I would be, this, it would be disingenuous on my behalf, and no disrespect for our city workers. But the services, when I look out my window right now with the garbage cans full of trash, we grow at six feet tall. I can't in good conscience vote to give anyone a raise until the employees speak out against this injustice done to the citizens of this community. Thank you, Mr. President. I, and thank you both of all the people.
Thank you, Oliver. Alderwoman from the eighth, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues from the twenty-fourth and from the twenty-sixth. I'm thanking our, our city employees. We, you know, we're, we're down. I think the last number that I heard was maybe a thousand positions were vacant that needed to be filled at the moment. And so the employees that we have right now are busting their tails to keep up with the work that needs to be done. We all know what our, what our alleys, what our dumpsters look like right now. You know, situations that we, we need to continue to reward our employees for sticking with us. That is one thing that we've, we've heard in this economy, that folks are jumping to other jobs where they're being paid more for their work, and people who have stuck out this, the pandemic with their current employer are sort of getting punished because they're not getting those same sign-on bonuses that other places are offering. And so this is, you know, giving these, these bonuses to our employees are incredibly important to reward them, to thank them for sticking with us and sticking with the city of St. Louis and continuing to deliver services as best as possible. And I, I do agree with the Alderman from the eighteenth, that there are things that we need to do better, and we continually need to look to, to work to improve our services. And I, I think we all deserve that, our citizens deserve that. You know, the, the city deserves that. But holding back on, on thanking folks for, for sticking with us through a really difficult time, I think would be inappropriate at this time. And so I, I do also have a question for the Alderman from the twenty-sixth, if she would yield for a question.
Yes.
Oliver from the twenty-sixth, we yield to a question to the Alderwoman from the eighth.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman. I'm sorry, I can't just pop across the hallway and ask this morning. But I, I did, you mentioned the, a committee substitute, and there is a floor substitute in the folder, so we're holding off on that for today.
Yes, because I don't want to jeopardize it not being passed out by this, the magic date.
Okay, understood on that. And I, you know, I would encourage everyone who's been a part of these conversations and these pay bills, that if they are, for some reason, you know, insufficient or where they need to be, I would recommend that we bring them back sooner than later without having to wait necessarily for the next fiscal year. But if, if we need to make fixes, let's make those fixes. But let's, I'm, I'm okay going forward, if you're okay going forward today, and happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I will note that the fixes have nothing to do with the, they're not fiscal fixes, they're verbiage.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Okay, I see Oliver from the fifteenth, you have your hand up. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I also want to echo the sentiments from the Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, Alderwoman from the eighth, and the Alderman from the twenty-fourth. I mean, our, our city employees are, are, you know, stretched so thin at, you know, there's barely a city department right now that has the adequate staff to function. And the challenge we have right now is the challenge that the city is having with recruiting employees is the same challenge that almost every sector is having at the moment. You know, the last couple of years, a million people in this country die due to COVID. We've had another million who have chosen early retirement during the pandemic. We have their, you know, estimated five hundred thousand to who are not re-engaging in the workforce, who don't have access to childcare. And then we have an untold number of folks who are struggling with long COVID and permanent disabilities from having COVID that makes it impossible for them to return to their full worthy that they were at, you know, pre-pandemic. I think that the bills that we are affording to for raises and bonuses, in addition to adding, you know, fertility insurance for city employees are really good steps. But I think we also have to recognize that going forward, we need to look at what other employee benefits we can be offering, even if it's not financial benefits. You know, maybe it's childcare, maybe it's, you know, other kind of, you know, savings accounts or things like that. Because we are going to continue to be short-stacked as long as we are not paying competitive wages and not hats that are able to be competitive with a lot of, you know, entities or employers that are, have more access to capital than we do as the city of St. Louis. So I think that this is a really good step. You know, we are all proud today to be standing by our city employee, giving them you know, a much-needed raise. But we also have to recognize that this has to be just the beginning. Because if we are going to fill those one thousand vacant positions, we have to figure out some other innovative ways to be able to encourage folks to come and work for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Probably need to find a way to find more employees from the area and different areas also someday. That's, that's another discussion, though. But thank you. Oliver, Oliver, recognize you, Oliver from the eighteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both of all the people. Let me say this. Since slavery, we have African people have been used that they reserve labor force, meaning we, white-controlled institutions refuse to hire us because we are black and, and we put up unnecessary barriers for, for and so we could, we could go to the jail, we could go to the prison, we could go to people with disabilities. We could go, we could, we could do change our method of recruitment, because we knew before, we weren't doing it before the pandemic. We weren't hired, we was constantly sending especially African peoples to jail for drugs and other things. And we do, and, and people are going to say they don't want to work. Well, that's why they brought us over here. We were kidnapped and brought over to work, so we have a history of working. So we need to change the method of recruitment. We need to change the test, because most jobs, except a few technical jobs, can be done by anyone. We need to hire more people, because I was a special education teacher. We need to hire more people from special needs. Those people, I know they work, I know they have some with discipline. Many of them have discipline, they are hard workers. So we definitely need to hire especially African people, and stop using African people as a as a feeder for public works for the rural areas and the white community in the state of Missouri. And that's all it is. It's a public work program, the prison program program is nothing but a slave ship located out in the rural areas of the state of Missouri. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you both of all the people. So we need to change our method of recruitment. Stop testing the things that don't need tests. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Oliver from the eighteenth. I don't see any more hands up. So with that, Oliver from the twenty-sixth, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for this robust conversation. As we move forward, I'm asking for previous on perfecting Board Bill forty.
Okay. We have been moved to second with perfect Board Bill forty as amended. We had a request for roll call vote. So any request for previous roll?
I, I can't.
I don't believe, okay.
I'm sorry, I must have talked around it too much. I'm asking for previous roll.
Okay, all right. We've had a request for previous roll. Hearing no objections, we have perfected Board Bill forty as amended. And with that, we'll move on to line item seventeen, third reading consent calendar. Shereen, please proceed.
Board Bill.
Take your time.
Third reading consent calendar. Board Bill two thirty-one, four, seven, eight, nine committee subs, thirteen, fifteen, and Board Bill seventeen.
All right. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we pass the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Oliver from the twenty-fifth, and I'll entertain a second. Seconded by the Oliver from the eighth, that we adopt our third reading consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro. Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Bacaro. Twenty aye votes.
All right. By your vote, you have sustained the motion of the Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. All right, before we proceed, Shereen, could we move, since I'm one of the sponsors, Board Bill nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one to the third reading informal?
So noted.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to line item eighteen, third reading report of engrossment, final passage.
Board Bill two, thirty-one, four, seven, eight, nine committee sub, thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
All right. All of business being suspended, the president will in open session fix our signature here to, to the end that these may become law. Everybody take a coffee break. We will now move to courtesy resolution cal, courtesy resolution consent calendar. Oliver from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we pass our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Entertain a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Oliver from the twenty-fifth, seconded, was it the Oliver from the eighth? I didn't catch it. No.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I apologize. Thank you very much. Been moved, seconded by Oliver from the fifteenth, we approve our courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor signify.
Sorry, Mr. President.
Yes.
President.
Discussion.
Oh, okay. We have on the courtesy resolutions calendar, certainly. Please proceed, Oliver from the eighth, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to recognize Resolution number forty-four from Alderman Bosley and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. I, I think this is great that we are pausing to recognize Juneteenth, and I would love to add my name, and I'm not sure if there's a if there's a majority of our colleagues, it would probably be in order to move to in-bank.
Would you like to make that motion?
And make that motion, that we in-bank Resolution forty-four.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we bank Resolution forty-four. Shereen, please make note of that.
So noted.
Okay. No further discussion? With that, it's been moved to second, we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. First ring of resolutions.
We have none.
Second ring of resolutions.
We have none.
Miss Laneson, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Intergovernmental Affairs will have a meet at one PM via webinar. Thursday, June sixteenth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's the extent of the announcements.
All right. And we, any hands up? Any announcements? Oliver from the twenty-sixth, I know we couldn't get away with at least one. Come on.
You already know. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My first announcement is I hope Alderman Grass, my colleague in the twenty-eight, doesn't mind me announcing this, but since it's my brother and sister Gabrielle and Toni Davis at the Davis Foundation Outreach, want you to know that if you have children and teens that may need meals, they give out free summer meals from Monday, I'm sorry, Monday through Friday from eleven to four PM at Prime fifty-five in the Delmore Loop location in sixty-one hundred Delmore. That's at Prime fifty-five, the Delmore Loop, in the Delmore Loop. And they give out free summer meals for children, Monday through Friday from eleven to four. And of course, we are not going to let this day go by. I already said our lovely secretary, Tracy Phillips' birthday was this weekend, but ma'am, you know we were not going to let this day go by. Happy birthday, Alderwoman Davis.
All right. Thank you, Oliver from the twenty-sixth. Happy birthday, Oliver from the nineteenth. And Oliver from the fourth, you are recognized.
Oh.
That's you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and all of the members of the board. I'd like to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. I'm not going to say how many years ago it was, but I toiled to bring her here and I toiled to bring her here and I want to wish her a happy birthday. She's in Kansas City, but that's okay. She's still my daughter. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. And Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, President Ballmer and members of the board. Uh, the two announcements that I've had to make, they're kind of pre-announcements since we're going to have a, a meeting again on Thursday. But the announcements are that, uh, in the seventeenth ward, there's going to be a botanical heights garden walk on June eighteenth from eleven AM to two PM. And you'll meet at the community garden, which is at forty sixty Folsom. And it is ten dollars a person. Uh, the second, uh, announcement is also on June eighteenth. Uh, there is the Juneteenth Caribbean Walkathon at the, at Forest Park, at the cricket fields, and the walkathon is from seven to nine. And the event goes all the way up to five PM, but the walkathon is from seven to nine. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Alderwoman. I see no other hands. With that, we'll move to, uh, line item twenty-four. Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to, uh, move that we excuse the alderpeople from the first and fourteenth wards for necessary absence.
Entertain a second? Someone speak?
Second.
Second.
All right. It's been moved from the Alderman twenty-fifth with multiples. I believe the Alderman from the fourth was one of the primaries. Uh, with that, that we, uh, excuse you, Alderman, from the first and fourteenth for necessary absence. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it? With that, we will make, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I move that we adjourn until Thursday, uh, this Thursday, June sixteenth at ten AM via webinar.
Second.
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 Okay. The move to second, we adjourn to June sixteenth, ten AM via webinar. Thank you all very much.
Technically, we need to vote on that, Mr. President.
Oh, I thought we, I said all in favor, say aye.
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 I, I heard someone say second. Okay.
No nos.
All right. We will move, meeting is adjourned. We'll see you on June sixteenth at ten AM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay hydrated.